Okay. Everybody ready? All ready? All ready staff? I'd like to call to order the monthly meeting for the Culpeper County Planning Commission for the month of June. We welcome everyone here this evening and we'll move on with our agenda. The first order of business is the approval of the agenda at hand in additions or deletions. Okay. Being all in favor of accepting the agenda as it is?
Aye.
All opposed likewise? Okay. The agenda is approved. The approval of the minutes of our May 8th meeting. We received those in our packets. Any concerns about those?
Nope.
Have a motion to put it to record?
Shall move.
Second?
Second.
Okay. The minutes will be put to record for May 8th. Now we'll move to our new business. Sam, or Neil?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. We have case G46304-1. It's a request by Culpeper Acquisitions LLC to rezone 425.96 acres from CS Commercial Services, RA Rural Area, and A1 Agricultural to Light Industrial LI. The applicant is proposing to use the property, the subject property, for a data center campus per Article 7.1A-2-2.5, including an area for an electrical substation and associated equipment. Property is located on Belle Prey Road, 684 in the Stevensburg Magisterial District, and also on 663 in the Stevensburg Magisterial District. It's found on tax map 42 parcel 6565C and tax map 43 parcel 5. The Planning Commission will consider, review, and make findings as to whether the general location or approximate location, character, and extent of the proposed substation are substantially in accord with the county's adopted comprehensive plan or part thereof in accordance with the Code of Virginia 1950 as amended section 15.2-2232. The Planning Commission is also responsible for making a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors as to approval or disapproval of the rezoning.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. We do have one item of business tonight that Neil's read into the record there. Specifically, we're looking at a rezoning application for light industrial, rather a large rezoning application at 425 acres plus. The map that you see on the screen right now are the parcels that are involved in that rezoning application. As Neil read into the record, there are several parcels, one larger parcel, and then some parcels there to the east that are a little bit smaller. All along Belle Prey Road tied up against the railroad tracks and then out to Stevensburg Road. Those are highlighted in red on the screen. This is a zoning map today. You have mixture of zoning for the properties that are seeking a rezoning. You have 50 acres of commercial, some RA zoning, and then mostly A1 agricultural zoning on the rest of the property today. You see a little bit of residential zoning. That's mostly, I've been there for many, many years, single-family residential zoning there to the east. You see a little bit of purple there on the screen. That is some industrial in the area. It's used as, I believe, RV stores and sales now, repair. And then you see a mixture across, right in the heart of Brandy Station, there near the interchange at Brandy Station. This kind of gives you a different view of the same property. Through the middle of the property, you see that blue area that's floodplain. The applicant has obviously been aware of that and has proposed a plan that stays out of that area altogether pretty much. This just kind of shows that really what we have today in this area mainly has been used historically as farmland. I'm going to leave it here, Mr. Chairman, as I go through just a little bit of the staff report. This is just one part of the applicant's concept plan that they've submitted with their initial and subsequent application or amended application. And I'm going to go through a little bit of the staff report. I won't read the whole thing. The staff report was posted a couple of weeks ago on board docs. Hopefully, the Planning Commission's had a chance to go through that. Agencies, normal agencies such as VDOT, Soil and Water Conservation District have reviewed the application, and they provided comments as well. Those were posted as well, and I'm not going to go into details of those. Staff reviewed it. One of the big tools that we use when we're thinking about rezoning is your comprehensive plan. You all know that, but that was pretty critical for this review as far as staff was concerned. One of the main goals that you see in Chapter 2, and one that's specifically related to data centers is what's being proposed here tonight, is Goal 3 of Chapter 2, which is your land use chapter, is to ensure that future data center development does not significantly alter or impact existing rural or residential surroundings while providing suitable areas for data centers closer to existing business areas. So as we review this application, that's just something to keep in mind, and the applicant will touch on that as well. They have a separate presentation too, Mr. Chairman, after I'm done. If you look towards the back of what the staff proposed under the planning synopsis, that's what I'm going to focus on and close with as far as staff comments for this application. The applicant did, before I get to that, the applicant did submit comment response to the applicant or to staff comments as well as VDOT comments and some other comments. And that also submitted a TIA, a traffic impact analysis as well. The VDOT is currently reviewing. We have not received comments back on that as of yet, but we hope to soon. In a nutshell, we're looking at a large rezoning for a data center complex, potentially with the proffer statement that was submitted, a floor area ratio of .25 on this type of acre, which still could utilize a max of about 4.6 million square feet of data center. Applicant did submit a fiscal impact statement, and that is significant when you're looking at data centers, and that's something that is an economic driver in a lot of localities, including here in Culpeper. And we have had a history, a good history with the current facilities that we have in the county today. And although the rezoning could be sizable in an economic development world, the development of data center campus regardless of configuration of this particular campus and staff's opinion would not fit the vision for the area of character, area of character for the county that's laid out in your future land use plan that's currently, was adopted just in 2023. The area is shown as agricultural and rural primarily with a little bit of 50 acres of commercial, and on this screen, it's that existing commercial is about right here. And we do show that to remain as potential commercial. It's not used today. The surrounding area is primarily, as I mentioned, single-family residences and agricultural operations today. We do have a senior living facility nearby and a church as well. The parcels are not located in urban services boundary. The parcels are not located in a future growth area. The parcels are not located in an area that the county has designated as a technology zone for this particular use. This project would necessitate the creation of new electrical transmission corridor to service a project of this size. The applicant, I'm sure, will address that with the commission as well, that would be needed for this type of industrial development in a rural area. We don't have the infrastructure in place today to be able to service this. Taken into account the 2023 comprehensive plan, staff recommends denial of the zoning application based on the following, and I've already hit on these primarily already. The site's not located in a future growth area. The site is shown as agricultural, rural, and commercial in the future land use plan. The site is not within the urban services boundary. It's not within the technology zone, and will likely create an additional transmission corridor that is not planned in the comprehensive plans, as well as a substation that is being planned with this application does not show in the comprehensive plan as well. And the intensive and extensive non-agricultural land consumptive development section, which is part of your comprehensive plan, this type of development is discouraged in areas such as this. One thing that Neil read into the record, Mr. Chairman, is compliance with 152232, which is a state code compliance section. When you're looking at specifically for utilities, the nature of this application does bring with it a substantial utility in the way of a substation. The applicant is aware of that, and they've planned for that and prepared for that. But in conjunction with the rezoning, we do need to find, the Planning Commission is charged to make a finding whether you feel like it's in that utility specifically is in conformance with the comp plan or in substantial conformance with the comp plan. In addition to those comprehensive plan issues that we've raised in the staff report, staff does believe that a more detailed concept plan should be submitted, showing actual potential building location and things like that, and then think the applicant can achieve that. The applicant will probably address this as well, but there is, has been the talk about construction traffic, and with this, it's a lot, and it could be an enormous amount of traffic during a construction period of a couple of years for a small secondary road. The applicant has explored, however, crossing for construction traffic, the Norfolk Southern Rail with an existing crossing that's off of Brandy Road today. That would help alleviate traffic certainly on Belle Prey Road and some of the other roads as well, Stevensburg Road, and then also coming in from inlet. Staff pleases that that's something that should be done prior to any potential approval of the project. An opinion of staff, the traffic impact analysis should include some other things that it's missing, but I'm sure VDOT will fill us in on that once they, once they review that fully. Due to the intense demand for utility centers, staff pleases that the applicant should be a little more detailed on the electrical corridor to be serviced if possible. I know that that's a hard thing for the applicant to do, and I know that they worked on it. And ultimately, Mr. Chairman, based on those things, in conjunction with the comprehensive plan goals, staff, there's one last section I do want to touch on because it's pretty significant, was a change in the 2023 plan, and that's when it talks about large-scale developments like this, and that's again in Chapter 2. There are certain things that the comp plan suggests are needed with an application that I believe are missing right now from this application. One is providing a full concept plan for this particular use, being located in an area that's already zoned or designated as industrial. Data centers should be at least, no further than a half a mile from an existing transmission corridor. This is not. Located near existing data centers. We have some in the county, as I mentioned already. This is not located adjacent or next to an existing data center facility, not in the tech zone. And also, the comp plan suggests that we should have sound studies and other mitigation studies to go along with applications, and some of those are missing from this current application. With those things in mind, staff is not prepared to recommend anything but denial of this application, Mr. Chairman, and I'd be happy to answer questions.
Okay. Thank you, Sam, for that summation of the application. At this time, is there the applicant or representative for the applicant? If you come forth and give your full name for the record, then we appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name's Ty Lawson. Here on behalf of the applicant, along with representatives of Culpeper Acquisitions, as well as engineering firm Traffic Engineer, and be happy to respond to any questions. We have had meetings with Sam and Neil, put together a fairly detailed proffer rezoning. It's very specific, and it is for a data center, and as we go through the presentation, we'll point out, we believe it's very unique. It is a large tract of land, but what we're proposing is much lower density than what would be allowed under the ordinance, and the reason is, and I'll speak briefly about the comprehensive plan, but to maintain the character of the area, and we're proposing extensive buffering, maintenance of existing trees, vegetation, and so on. We do look forward to your all's comments, comments of citizens that are here and would ask for an opportunity to respond to those. I think you all also have correspondence for me. We had talked about the possibility of a work session. Understand that that's up to you. It's your discretion, but we're certainly offering that as well. We'd be pleased to respond in detail to any subsequent work session and questions that you all may have. Sam talks a good bit about the comprehensive plan, and certainly, that's very important. It's that guide. It's that thing that we update from time to time. The code requires that, and to give an idea of what a property ought to be in the future. This is an interesting site, and the exhibit in front of you shows it. Its longest boundary is Norfolk Southern Railroad, and it's been that way for, as far as we can tell, going back to when you first started comp plans. And actually, up until the 23 plan, it was consistently light industrial. Submit that, that actually makes some sense, being along a main line of Norfolk Southern Railroad. Of course, you all know the site. It's flat. It lends itself to putting in siding and servicing industrial, and certainly, that's what's around us. In the earlier slides, Sam showed you some industrial that actually adjoins us. I think that's telling. We certainly acknowledge the recent amendment to take it out of that light industrial, but it's kind of hard to ignore the history of this site. Also, we've submitted as part of our proffer package soils maps to look at the viability of ag. It'll support hay. It's not, it's not the best for crops. Again, I think for the decades that it was slated for light industrial, frankly, that makes some sense. But we are cognizant, as Sam said, you need to look at the area character and don't want to alter or impact the adjoining areas, is I think what he said. And let, I'm going to let Mr. Martin get up here, John Martin, get up here in a minute and walk through our slides, but we've spent a great deal of effort, significant engineering exercise, to not only preserve the existing buffers and screening and trees, mature trees, but then to install buffers around the balance of the property. Land, we proffered to landscape that with native species, and so the net of it is, is if you live around this, your view shed is actually going to be improved. You are not going to see, and the way we proffered, the height of our buildings, you will not see those, you will not hear those. All of the equipment is along the rail line. And would submit, I know you all have been visited by several folks wanting to do, data centers in this county would submit that this is, this is unique, and this is a great site, a well-suited site for what we are proposing, and I would submit that it does fit in with the comprehensive plan and the way the county has viewed this property over these last, well, I think of the 60s is not that long ago, but I guess it is, many decades at this point. But at this point, I'm going to turn it over to John Martin, and again, we'll be pleased to respond to any questions, and the team is here with their various specialties to respond to those questions as well, and thank you for your time.
Okay. Thank you very much. I'm sure. And Mr. Martin was going to come up this aisle? Oh, this aisle, John Martin? Excuse me? Okay. We have those missing. They're just for the commission right now, and we'll check with the staff later if for some reason they made those available. Ms., one more remark. You'll be asked to leave. We've dealt with that before with you, so I want you to understand, respect is something that we give to everyone in here, and we expect it to be done that way decent and in order. Okay? One more comment. Okay, we're going to go ahead. If we can, we'll go ahead and move through this. Think we just stopped at handing this out, and then we'll move with the rest of the presentation. Could you give, do you give your name for the record?
I will. I want to say that my name is John Martin, and while my ancestor, the late John Martin, founded Jamestown, I am no relation to the landowner that we have under contract. I do not have any relationship whatsoever with David Martin. And so, as a matter of fact, as I was meeting with people over the last two years, I started introducing myself as John Douglas. So my real name is John Douglas Martin, but I wanted to make that very clear. I'm sure David's a wonderful person. Other than me having his contract, I mean, his lender contract, I really don't know Mr. Martin. So I want to reiterate something that Ty talked about is, we understand the position that we're putting you in. It's very serious. I take this very serious. We're asking you to do something which is, I think is Herculean, to take something out of a long-range plan that you've already accepted to go back and put it back into. But if I didn't strongly believe in this plan, what I think this can do for Culpeper and what it can do for me as a user, I wouldn't be here wasting everyone's time. So the thing that I, that I want to give you is, why Culpeper? Why do we care about this site? I've been looking in Culpeper since April of '22 for a specific need for my user, and we don't have it on there, but you've got it in front of you. The reason why this site's very important to us is on the Brandy Station. Did I? Did I leave it? So the reason why this site's important, just to orient you, you can see the lake in the middle of the site, but to the north along Brandy Road and the railroad track are two lines of fiber. And on the south part are three more lines of fiber. And within those trunks of fiber, it's very important. And so, why is that fiber there? That fiber connects to Virginia Beach where two very large underwater cables coming from overseas into the US. They come up through Richmond, come through Culpeper, and they go into Ashburn. So there's something called a peering point, equinox, in Terra Mart. Those are very important own ramps for data centers, and so it allows us to put a data center there, and so we can tap into have multiple fiber lines to get, to move information very quickly overseas or through Ashburn. It does it in microseconds. That's why this site's important. So I did look at a lot of sites in the tech zone. They didn't work for my, our need. And so the other things that are important are power. I'm going to get to that in a minute because that's a very long conversation. Water. It's not important as it used to be because we're in air-cooled system, so we don't use a lot of water. Most of our water is for flushing toilets. So yes, we have more buildings, we're going to use more water. We do not want to be tied in, or do we need to be tied in, to any future water or sewage system? We can maintain what we're doing on the site. We've tested the site, and we are more than confident that we have enough land and enough water to be able to support ourselves. The other thing we like is being rural. We want to be there. We don't want a lot of things around us. And as we looked, while we understand there will be impact to, I'm not naive to that. I've gotten to know the community, especially those that live along Stevensburg Road, pretty well, as I've met with them several times, and the Shiloh Baptist Church, explaining to them what we're doing, why we're doing it, and what questions and concerns. I'll get to their concerns and the way I think we can solve that in a minute. The other thing that's important is topography, and I'm going to talk about dirt when we get to the actual site. I do have renderings of the site. Why topography is very important? It'll have to do with the way we're not going to mess up roads because we don't need to take dirt off the site. So I'm going to do something that I normally don't do. I'm going to talk backwards on this presentation because it's very important. Our impact of the project we're bringing is significant. It's a significant financial impact to Culpeper. And so I want to talk about that. I'm going to talk about proffers, and then we're going to get into the site. Normally, I talk specifically about a site, and then I get into the benefits. I want to do it backwards because as we start getting to the site, I want you to think about, as we build this project, I want you to think about what that really means to Culpeper. So we plan on building, so several buildings. One of our buildings is 430,000 square feet. It's on a footplate of 215,000 square feet. That one building of data center will contribute roughly $17 million a year to Culpeper. Yes, you're going to see those numbers go down up there to go down from, but that's not taking into consideration us buying a new service, which we do about every three years. So as we take them out, the number goes back up. So on average, it's about $16.5 million a year per building. If we build, if we max out the site and we build everything we can build, it's nine buildings. That's $167 million a year. It's a significant project. It's a significant investment we're making. It's a $12 billion investment we're making into this property. So it's something we've taken very serious. That's why we studied it for almost two years. On the bottom left there, on my bottom left there is, that's your budget for 2024. Just your property taxes along are 70, $75.5 million. So yes, our project at full build would dwarf your, what you're collecting in property taxes. So I will look at it this way. What are the chances you're going to build all nine buildings? Good question. What if we built four buildings? If we built four buildings, and for some reason, that's it, and we can satisfy what we're doing with AI, then we're at half of your, I mean, we're still at, you're still significant. You're at $80 million. So even if we half-build our plan, it's a significant investment that we're making just in tax revenue, not to mention the local jobs, special construction and technology we hope to lean on. By the way, if this project were in a tech zone, you would be receiving $263 million in less revenue over that five years. So if I were to take this project and move it down the street and put it into an area which you've titled tech zone, your county would lose $263 million. So one of the things that I've done since April of '22 is I've spent an enormous amount of time in your community. I've talked to supervisors. I've talked to business leaders. I've talked to teachers. I've talked to those that live up against the site, talked to those that go to the Shiloh Baptist Church again, and I've talked to a bunch of business leaders. And, and they've asked me, you know, what are you going to do for us? What's the good and what's the bad? And so that's where we get into proffers. Normally, I don't list these in a meeting like this, but I think they're important to know because my job is, I know I'm bringing a significant project here, but what am I going to do to the neighbors? How do I mitigate that? And that's what proffers are supposed to do. They're supposed to mitigate close to the property as you can. So simple things, which are traditional in proffers, which are the fire department. We're building a building. Obviously, we want to add a fire department. We're going to affect public schools, meaning we want to educate technology folks, so we want to invest in that school so they can get educated, and instead of that person being educated here and going somewhere else, maybe they'll stay in Culpeper and work for us. There is 4H, which is important to us. We know we're taking significant land out of agriculture. Can we invest in 4H? And that's a question, I think, for the town, for the county attorney, but we feel confident that we can, we can do that. We've got conservation easement up there, and what is that? That's something that the county started recently. We would cede that fund. We understand we're taking significant land out of the county. The Board of Supervisors and you guys will then have control of that money to be, to go and to buy other properties to protect that or do that as you see fit. What is a proposed Stevensburg Community Fund? This is not the first time I've done this, and so I meet with communities, and I always say, yes, there's a lot of, there's a significant revenue that's coming to your county. Can I promise you, you're going to see $1 of that? I cannot do that. But what I can promise you is, what's the problem here now? How do you think we're going to affect you? And so as we looked along those residences on Stevensburg Road, there was complaints about their property doesn't perk. They're a pumping hole. And so the original idea was, can we tie them into our system? And we didn't, from the county, we didn't get, they didn't think that was the greatest idea. I mean, we can, we can fish that out later. But what we did think is, if we created a fund and worked with DEQ and the county to let a third party administer that fund to be able to support those residents, can we do that? And so we've got proposed, we're working with DEQ on how that would happen, how that would be facilitated, how that would be managed, but we would cede that to be able to take care of specifically those residents, which I would call impacted, but impacted because they're adjacent. I think that's really their only impact. So there's other things on there. I'll get into it in a minute. We get to the site about widening the road, berm creations, which Ty alluded to. But that's, that's really the financial impact to the county. The other thing is, over that two years, you know, I've tried to be a good listener and come back with ways to solve problems. I don't have all the best ideas, maybe, so one of the things I wanted to do was listen to you guys. Maybe we've missed something. Maybe we're... Maybe we're, we're nuts somewhere. I'm actually looking forward to public comments. There's, I'm here to learn. You know, I spent time yesterday with Piedmont Environmental Council. I can learn. So there were some things that I listened to in that meeting that I haven't thought of. And so, and that's the reason why Ty alluded to, maybe this makes sense for us to continue having conversation because I'm here to make this package the best I can. And I can only do that if we have conversation. So you just saw this map. This is our site. And so during that community engagement, these are, this is typically what I, I would heard. They were worried about us building a bunch of buildings on this site. They're worried about traffic, construction, loss of ag land. They're worried about noise and the visibility of the buildings. I'm gonna come back and talk about power. I haven't forgot about that. But the, and so how do we solve that? You just saw this picture. So in the county now, typically you have, so by the way, I want to keep the buildings as far away from anyone that I possibly can. That's why we're, we have 426 acres under contract. I want to push those buildings as close as I can to that railroad. And I think right now we're at a .22. So if full max, we're at 3.8 million square feet, we would never go to 4.6. I think that was a computation we had to do with the code and that's why our presentation says that. Under no circumstances are we gonna do that. We would never in a million years go over 4 million square feet. We can say that, however you want to say it, it's not gonna happen. So most we'd ever have, and I'll show you in a minute, is nine buildings. But, so what am I doing to hide those buildings? So there is dirt on the property. I don't want to take that dirt off the property. For A, I need the dirt, but number two is, those, if you've seen those big trucks, you put dirt in them, they get on the roads, there's big heavy trucks, they have small wheelbases, all that weight tears up your roads. So I may proffer to fix your road, but guess what? I'm not gonna come fix your road until I'm finished construction. What if construction lasts eight years? That's ridiculous. So we want to keep the dirt on the property. I don't want to take it off. And so we're pushing that dirt to the corners, to the perimeter. In that green, typically those buffers are 50 feet. We've pushed them to 250 feet. It's essentially a football field before we would start putting a building on, on the land. But that, those buffers are 15 feet tall and then would be planted with vegetation, which is indigenous to Culpeper. We've got a significant budget for that. I want to believe it's close to $1 million. So I, and I don't want to plant saplings. I want to plant trees so you don't wait 30 years until you can't see our building. We are widening the road from Stevensonburg all down to the corner on our property line. We're giving up our land to do that so that it doesn't take across, doesn't take property from the neighbors. We've, we've said we would do 24 feet. That matches the bridge, the large bridge, when we run, headed toward 29. But we've gone back and forth with Sam about maybe that needs to be something a little less. We can, we're open to whatever VDOT wants to do. We have the budget for it, which is $3.8 million. We're open to how you want to, how you want to handle that. Construction access. So I know there's been a lot of talk about they don't want to see construction driving back and forth. Years ago, one of the landowners had an easement off of Brandy Road onto the property on the far northwest side. There's actually a turning lane off of Brandy Road that turned into this property. And there was an active easement. That easement was, that landowner years ago sold that easement back to the railroad. We have been in conversation with Norfolk for the last year. What Norfolk has told us is they're not gonna show up and say they're for or against. That's not what they do. But they said, if this is approved and we do have this, then they will come and say, yes, we will give you that right to be good to the community so you don't have to have the construction on the road. We are working on facilitating a letter for you so it'll document that. So our goal is to bring our construction from Brandy Road onto the site. It would be monitored by a third party for safety. You know, a, a resident can't drive through our property, take a shortcut. I mean, it's for construction and it's heavily monitored. Water and septic are on site. All right, so let me talk about power. So power obviously is very important. It's important for data centers all over the world. It's not just a problem in Northern Virginia. The problem is transformers. And some of those are delayed three years. That's the first problem, which I'll have a solution for. I'll talk about that in a second. But how are we gonna bring power into this site? So Dominion has a process, which I'm sure you guys are familiar with, that when something is zoned, the utility has to bring power to that use. Now Dominion could say, okay, we're not gonna bring it to you for 10 years and we'll let you know what the path is. I don't want to wait five, 10, eight, whatever years. So we went to Dominion about a year and a half ago and they said, if this is the site, what are the three paths you would use to get here? Because we want to minimize the impact to the community. So we worked with them and their engineering staff to, to get us a route from Route 3. It's about two miles. It comes through, two-thirds of the path are through conservation easements. The, the other path, which you would see the lines, is when you get up toward Belle Prey Road, it would come across two residents. We are still talking to those two residents about either selling us the property or selling us an easement. So I'm, I'm ahead of Dominion and I'm working with them because I want to be able to say we have a clear line to bring power here. We have a plan to do that. And then Dominion would take, they still have to submit those three, you know, our preferred path and two other paths. They have to submit that to the state corporation. But when you walk to the state corporation, you say, we already have approval from the landowners, then usually that happens fairly quick. Why does it want, does it need to happen quick? I want to start building tomorrow. I am not buying this land to sit on it and hopefully it gets more valuable in 10 years and sell it and make a lot of money. Or I'm, you know, or I don't have a use for it. I want to start building tomorrow. I want those benefits that I talked about earlier to start happening tomorrow, not in 10 years. So that's why we're being very aggressive, which we normally don't do on my end to get involved with the utility by the transmission line. We want to put those substations at the, at the top up there beyond the lake. So they're sitting up against the, I'm gonna show you that in a minute, up against that lake. That lake's important because we're gonna use that for fire suppression. We're not gonna empty that lake, which I think's been a rumor. So we've been worried about what neighbors are gonna see when we build this building. So we, we did some takeoffs with Topo, with Topos and with, with some satellite imaging. And what we did was, if you can see in the middle of the, there's, there's a house across, directly across the street from the property now, is the yellow building there. And that's one of the angles, which if you look at the very top of the screen, you see all those little black things which surround the property. Those are 15-foot berms. So we can't place a berm in a wetland, but we can get it close. So what I was trying to do is to orient our site so the neighbors would not see our building. And so that's how we got to 15 feet and that's how we got to where we're gonna locate the buildings. And so if you look at number A along, the distance between the berm and the building is, yeah, 1,200 feet. If you go from the building to the top of the residence, it's about 2,000 feet. So that's almost seven football fields. I'm doing everything I can to push my entire development against that railroad track. And then what am I gonna do in front of it? I'm gonna show you. I'm gonna, I'm gonna continue to use it as ag land. Some other things on the, which we always hear about data centers, the noise. We're following all of your standards. We're not gonna ask to have a louder center. Technology's, has gotten really good. The HVAC we buy has gotten better. We're air-cooled, they don't rattle like they used to. When it comes to lighting, the last thing I want to do is add to light pollution for the neighbors. So we've asked, how low can we put a, a light pole? I would, I wouldn't even mind it if you said you don't need lights. We don't have a lot of people that work at a data center. Think of a data center as an operating room. You don't want a lot of people in an operating room. Data centers are the same way. So they're almost clean space. So the less amount of people I've got in there, the better. And if it's AI, I don't have sales teams there, I don't have, I have people that are monitoring it in case something bad happens. I'm not allowed to go in our centers, by the way, mainly because there's no reason to go in there. This is a bigger illustration of the same thing. B is just another sight line from the same house directly across the street from the property. And C is a sight line from the church. So our point is, we're leaving the existing vegetation and then we're gonna add to it. Environmental. So this property of 426 acres, roughly 78 of it are wetlands. We're not gonna touch the wetlands. I don't know how to be more clear than that. Our goal is not to touch the wetlands, to preserve them. There's, there's nothing we want to do to, to harm the wetlands on that property. A lot of that's 100 acres, not wet, it's 100 acre flood, which is what most of that is. But we don't, we're not gonna ask to do anything and we're proffering to that. Here's the site. So to orient you, that, that proposed stormwater management pond, I believe close to that's kind of where the existing house is on the property. If you look at the front there, it looks like Christmas hit our project with all those little, it looks like little Christmas lights. Those are berms. You can see, by the way, this is a satellite map, so all the trees you'll see on there, other than the berm, that's the way that looks today. We don't need to remove any of those trees. If you look at the top corner, that's where we would build a substation. And so we would build a substation and then we would build, typically three buildings can go off of one substation. And so that last substation wouldn't happen unless we build those last three buildings on the left side of the wetlands, if that makes sense. The way we orient those buildings is we have generator yards in between and that does that for sound. The sound blocks in, it goes up, it doesn't go this way. The other thing which I failed to mention is, we're asking for, we're only gonna build a 60-foot building. So two stories within the building, but it's, it's 60 feet. I think, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, in Light Industrial, is it 80? 75. So we've said 60 feet. In our design now, we do not put things on the roof for a host of reasons, but mainly is because we keep them in the generator yards because we've noticed that when you have them up on the top and people put very inexpensive parapets. And so the noise goes through that and so it, it allows us to control sound. So we've said 60 foot, no parapet. But, so the reason why we want so much land and we're not using, as you can tell, we're not using all of the land is I wanted to hide the, our project on this site. And I think by using roughly 70 acres, correct me if I'm wrong, 70 acres of the 426. So what, what are we gonna do with the rest of that? We're big into pollinators, we think that's important. We still believe that we can maintain the look of that agriculture look. There's things that we can be creative with the county on and how we would use that land that we don't plan to develop. However, I do need to secure it. What goes on inside that building's incredibly secure. And so we just have to be mindful of that when we talk about how we, how we cohabitat agriculture into our, and we're open to that. We're, I have no problem with that. We will have security at two parts of it, but that's a, that's an easy thing to, to figure out. So that's really my thing, guys. Did I miss anything? Now look, we have, we have traffic engineer, we have stormwater, we have site, we have engineering, we have water. So if we want to get into, how many tests did you do and talk about, that's over my head? I'll admit, that's what I don't know, but I have people here that are smarter than I am that can answer any of those type of questions.
One thing I correct though, is, keep going, saying wetlands, you meant you're not gonna impact the flood plain. There are a couple spots we're gonna have to cross the wetlands with drives and stuff like wetlands, not flood plain.
Right.
We're not gonna impact the flood plain, but...
Sir, you want to take a comment, say, one?
Yeah. I'm Eric Segal with Urban Engineering. I'm civil engineer on the project. He made a statement about how we would not impact wetlands. I think he meant we're not gonna impact the flood plain. There are wetlands on the property and the narrowest areas where to get access to the property, which they're already being impacted today, but they just haven't been regulated because it's agricultural. Like access to get to the substations, you're gonna have to cross the wetlands, not the flood plain, but the wetlands to get to those substations. And when we widen the road, there's gonna be minor impacts because when the road gets wider, it goes into that, widens into the creek, you know, to widen the road. But there'll be, there'll be impacts based on utility and our access. It will, there are no impacts because of the buildings themselves. Okay?
Thanks. Anything else, team?
We're here for you.
Okay. Okay. At this time, we can ask the applicant questions. We start on Keith, Ms. Price.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Thank you, sir. Appreciate the presentation. You mentioned your user. I was wondering, is this for a single user? And are you able to tell us who that is or what the industry is?
It's a data center. And, and we're hyperscalers. So hyperscalers are people like Microsoft, Google, Facebook, Meta, those types. No, I would prefer not, I don't think it's relevant to who we are. There's a whole reason why we don't want to do that, but, but no, but we're a hyperscaler, we're a single user. And, and you know, the distinction is I'm not a colo. So I'm not someone who's gonna go buy up and then I've gotta go get all of my tenants and then build it very slowly. Our goal is to start building this immediately and build as fast as possible.
Yesterday, our planning director received a letter from the Virginia Department of Conservation and Recreation. It was posted to board docs, I think forwarded to you, that made some points concerning this project and potential impacts to the Brandy Station Unit of Culpeper Battlefield State Park, which was just dedicated last week.
Right.
And it goes on to recommend that the applicant submit the project to DCR to form the, to begin the project review process. Would you be willing to submit your project to DCR?
So I received the letter two hours before I came to this hearing. So I would work with Sam on how we would, how we, we'd absolutely work with anyone. Is my, is my, is my answer, yeah. But literally, I just read that literally two hours ago.
Okay.
It was a little surprise that I received it the day of this hearing when we applied. I think we put our application in February, so I don't know why it got lost in the mail or what. But we're here to help, yes.
Okay. Let me ask you, the security fencing, is it on the outside of the berms and the screening so that it would be visible by local residents who pass through by?
Great question. I want to hide it behind the berm. I don't want you to see a security fence. I don't want you to know we're there, is really what.
Okay.
So yes, the, the plan is that a security fence would go behind the berms. However, we have, we have to be creative and we'll, we'll work with staff on this. We can't, we're not gonna, my assumption is we would not put a security fence through a flood plain or a wetland. So we will work on how we would do that. But our goal is to mitigate that as, as, as much as we can.
And just one, one final question for me. You'd mentioned widening the westbound portion of Belle Prey Road. Would you do that before construction starts or, so you'd do it before you began to have the truck traffic out there or the construction traffic?
We're, we're not planning on having construction traffic on that road because we're gonna come through the other part of the property, so.
So the purpose then of widening Belle Prey is what, just to make it better for local residents or for local traffic?
Yes.
Just as a sort of a proper?
Yep.
Okay. All right. Thanks, thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Yes, sir. I mean, yep, I apologize. My mother just rolled over.
So I had a few questions. First question is on the layout itself. Did you actually run computations to calculate your stormwater? Did you do a VRM calculation spreadsheet? Did you evaluate the detention associated with the facility? Or do any approximate sizing to basically verify that which...
I work for Lance Manassas.
Verify what's shown on here.
Yeah, I know that guy. So we did not go through a full VRM spreadsheet, but we know that the amount of land we have and the amount of open space that's being preserved, that we're gonna meet all the goals of both state and county of all the regulations lands. There's, you know, I, I mean, I'm showing these wet ponds, but there's gonna be combinations of filters, we're gonna do whatever.
Several BMPs in addition.
Yeah, we, yeah, we're gonna meet everything that meets, preserving that flood plain in Yeah, we're gonna meet everything that meets, preserving that floodplain in that, in that area too, as well, so.
Will the, are you willing to proffer 100-year detention in the facilities?
100-year detention?
Given the floodplain, you know, I mean, in terms of the amount of impervious space, impervious area, whether or not you're gonna increase the flood elevations based on that without...
Well, yeah. First of all, the flood elevation's based on ultimate development, which is based on comp plan, which at the time this floodplain study was done, that set that for FEMA, this was industrial, so. And that meant that the whole site could be at a .8. This site's gonna be at like a .3, so.
Was the floodplain study based on comp plan at the time, or was it based on current development?
All FEMA floodplains are based on comp plan.
They're based on current uses? Based on the existing uses at the time that are on the site, not necessarily the planned use?
Yeah, but they put the planned use in there when they run the curve number, because that's how we set it up, when we do them. When we do them, when we do the FEMA floodplain.
Well, the county usually requires comp plan development, but FEMA does not. And they specifically ask you not to submit it when you submit your hydraulic models. That's what I'm saying.
You know, we'd have to look at what that means for the size of what it does to the size of these ponds, because, you know, it's not a requirement to detain for the floodplain. It's not gonna raise the water surface of the floodplain, based on the fact that our time of concentration is probably a week before that floodplain's time of concentration comes through, based on how close we are.
Yeah, and you can share the hydraulic benefit.
Hydraulics, I'll tell you right now, that whole site'll drain long before this thing peaks for what the actual floodplain is, 'cause this is a good-sized floodplain. The culverts are twin 10-by-10 boxes. I mean, it's...
Yeah, I was just asking a question. So if needed, you would be willing to do that?
Yeah, but if I could prove that, the time to peak is way in advance.
Yeah, I mean, a lot of times you'll show the peak attenuation.
It's gonna peak in 10 minutes. That thing peaks in like 40 hours, you know, so.
Yeah. I got you. And then as far as the environmental, was an environmental study actually done? Did someone actually walk in and do like wetland studies, or somebody like that?
Yeah, 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 it was StanTech that had done the initial study, yes.
And so, you know, we looked at like ephemeral streams and things of that, and all that kinda stuff?
There's been wetlands evaluation. They haven't filed the actual JD yet, but they've done all the work to file the JD.
To file for it.
Yes.
What about any kind of noise study? Was there a decibel evaluation based on the HVAC units that would potentially be there to show that there's no mitigation off-site?
There was not a noise study done yet, but I will tell you, with as much as he works, and the 30 million square feet of data centers that I'm working, that I'm working on, that with these new air-cooled systems, which are closed loop, they're still like antifreeze in a car, you fill them, but then it's air-cooled, that the noise attenuation and the starting of the generators, when you face the generators towards the buildings and yards toward the buildings, it doesn't get anywhere near the 65 decibel out at the building, let alone 1,000 feet from the neighbor.
Yeah, I just didn't know if that was...
It just, no, we haven't done a study yet, but...
Yeah, the other question I had was that farthest building to the right, that's the closest to the road, what that distance is? Because I don't see the cross-sections that show the closest building, in terms of a viewshed study.
It's probably 500 feet, 'cause that berm is at 250 feet. So it's about double that. I think it was 279 to that corner from the road.
Yes, I'd probably wanna see what that looks like, I guess. I mean, the other question would be, is whether or not the landscaping that's in the cross-sections, is that based on tenure canopy growth, or is that based on current growth? Or is that based on planted at the time of the trees will be planted?
If they're all planted at the calipers that he's talking about, say 3-inch for the deciduous, and 16-foot for flowering, the standard plantings, that's pretty close to what you see there. That's not 10-year growth.
That's not 10, that's at the time of planting. Okay. Let's see what else. As far as the traffic, did you have a TMP or any kinda traffic plan prepared?
Grove Slade's on that one.
Okay.
I get a break.
There you go.
Hey, everyone, this is Pankaj Singla from Grove Slate. We don't have any plan right now, but the site plan, they will have the TMP in place.
Okay, so you haven't prepared one yet?
Yeah, that's right.
And then, as far as the, the traffic projections, I mean, you've done that. I mean, we did get VDOT involved?
Yes. We have a traffic study done for this one, got county and VDOT involved. So, projection is based on the, since this is a bigger data center, so this is based on a bigger data center study. So we use, instead of IT, we use a study done by Bowman to get the estimated number of trips that will be generated by this development.
So I think you said there was a level of service evaluation intersection, so it doesn't degrade the intersections? I mean, obviously, data centers don't have a whole lot of actual workers, but during construction, you could have a lot of, you know, tractor trailers and things like that, not necessary dump trucks also go into the site?
Right.
For deliveries and things of that nature?
We have done capacity analysis for the two intersections shown here. Those are done for the site traffic, not the construction traffic, but construction traffic is not expected to exceed the total site traffic, which is being taken from the study accepted by VDOT.
So based on the existing roads that you have today, there's no, it will say, truck turning movements that's gonna be impacted, or where they run a WB67 or something through the site? And also, to get there, there's no issues with the roads that are there today to access it?
So, this site is not gonna generate much truck traffic, but the construction traffic is going to be, stay on Brandy Road, and they will have a construction access, so it won't have any issues.
Won't have any, okay. And then electric questions, so that might be for somebody else? So the electric question is, substations that are gonna be in the back, are they gonna be, basically, are you gonna be delivering power overhead, or is it gonna be underground?
Power's gonna come overhead.
Okay, so there're not gonna be any duck banks or anything like that in the roadway systems or anything like that?
From the substation to the actual building, I can't... Most likely underground, I'm talking about from the source across Belle Prey Road onto our site. That'll be above until it hits the substation.
So it'll be the big overhead towers? So that would be going through the conservation areas, and those are allowed in the conservation areas?
Correct.
Okay. And then, what else do I have? I guess what I was going with is, if you were gonna have underground, I was wondering, like, you know, what's a typical size duck bank that you're gonna have from the substation to the building? Where that was gonna be, I know the ones that we're dealing with, and Prince William with Amazon and others, that the amount of space is large with all the bundles and the amount of data and conduits that are gonna go in the ground. So there's a lot of, a lot of piping.
It's a lot of piping, it's a lot of concrete, and we lose, we lose electricity when we bank them like that underground.
So I think with Terrence's point, there will be disturbance of the wetlands and the other plant material that... They're gonna do direct berry, probably?
No, they won't.
I got you.
They'll shoot those down to the creeks.
I got you.
The getaways.
Okay.
That's what they call it, getaways.
I got you. And then the last thing I had was, what was your potential construction timeframe overall? If you were to start tomorrow? You have end users, I suppose, already, so...
End user, user, singular, yes.
You mentioned transformers. We're having difficulty with transformers ourselves about five minutes.
You're right, I'm glad you reminded me. I should actually take notes when I talk. So, years ago, we, we bought transformers and we warehoused them. And so, we've worked with Dominion for them to accept our transformers. And that seems to be something we're gonna be able to do. We were just lucky, I don't know if we were smart or lucky, but we were able to buy some transformers. So, but for construction, you're looking at probably at least 12 months of design and plan approval, and it's probably close to 12 to 18 months before the first building's up, and first building up and occupied. So you're like two and a half years?
Something like that.
Yeah.
Okay. But full build-out, if you were to build all the buildings, you're probably looking at seven, eight years, maybe?
Maybe ten, depending on how they...
Yeah, I'm just trying to think about, if you were resident and you started construction, you were able to fill everything, how long would they be seeing?
We've had construction projects where you're on one, so that building's size is 215,000 square feet. I've got projects where we're putting servers in one end of the building, while they haven't closed in the other end of the building yet. My goal is not to be here in 10 years. Our goal is to build those things as fast as we can.
That's all I have.
Yep.
My turn? Okay. So, I'm not an engineer, and it's hard to follow an engineer with the technology, with the terminology. So, if you'll bear with me here, I have some concerns about, I guess, the noise from the generators. And there's, not the HVAC systems, I'm talking about the generators, 'cause those things are loud. Are they mufflered? Or will they be? What is, I mean, there's a lot of sound that comes off a generator.
I should just sit down, 'cause I'm not an engineer.
Okay.
So Cummins, CAT, and MTU are the providers of generators.
That's right.
All three of them have a muffler system.
Are you using them?
Yeah, they use them.
Well, we've got them here in town, and they're not using them, so I'm just saying.
Well, they use them, and then the way these orientated, those, the generators are gonna be orientated where, they're gonna be in between the buildings, where the noise from the generators will be 30 feet lower than the buildings that will be blocking them. So the noise will be between those walls, so that the yards of these buildings are not facing the residential houses. The ones, the ones that are over on, on the right side, or the east side, there'll be screen walls on those ends where the generators are, and that'll also be a wall that covers the generator. So, the walls are such that you won't even see the stacks. So, noise-wise, and if a noise study's done, they'll show that the allowed decibel at the road is 65, it won't be even close at that point. The other thing is, you gotta understand, when they run the generators, they either run them when you are all out of power, that rare times that you're all out of power, and they exercise the generators, one generator for 15 minutes at a time. So they don't run all the generators at one time when they exercise them.
Yeah, I understand.
It goes through a progression, so.
How many generators per building?
These buildings are 450,000 square feet. What's that? 430, so that'll be 18 generators per building. So those two buildings would be 36 generators per each double building.
Correct. Okay. All right, so that's, that's a concern of mine, is how you're gonna mitigate noise, because the humming of a data center is annoying if I'm across the street or even a mile away. I believe that you're gonna have some noise.
Yeah.
So, that's one of my concerns. Now, the overhead power coming across Belle Prey to the station is gonna look like a major Dominion power line? I don't, yeah, so it's gonna be big, and who's gonna look at that? And who's, which neighbor here's properties it gonna cross?
I don't know, there's multiple properties.
I don't know.
Who would come through, Mr. Kelso, Mr. Daniels, the easements, and then we're talking to...
You gotta go to the microphone that he's asking you.
The properties are, they start with Kelso's property. Joe Daniels.
Okay. He said okay?
Yes.
Okay.
And then it goes, and the folks I'm talking to now are Zach Green and Wilbur, those two. And so, they have not said yes, and they have not said no, so we're still talking to them.
So if they say no, what happens then?
We'll come up with a different path.
A different path?
We will go, where Joe Daniel stops, we'll have, we will look for a different route.
Okay.
I have not gone to those landowners, 'cause I didn't wanna exercise those, because this is the clearest and cleanest path.
Okay. All right. Then, the next, the next item that I have on my mental list here is, the impervious surface is gonna be huge, and I've known that property for 40 years. It was a dairy farm. It was never going to ever be industrial, except in the early 90s, when we had a buyer come into Culpeper, and we blanketly added industrial here and there. And this was like a spot zoning that got into the political arena. So, I think that it is very wet there, and I'm pretty sure the crop reason is because it's wet a lot of the times. And we're now gonna put concrete between the buildings, concrete everywhere. I understand what you're talking about, that you're gonna put these ponds in. But your statement that it'll stay for 40 hours on that property, I find that hard to believe. There's...
That wasn't my statement, it doesn't stay for 40 hours. I said that, that floodplain probably attenuates in 40 hours, the water that comes from offsite. Our water will go through here in 10 minutes.
In 10?
Our water will go out in 10, 12 minutes.
To a pond, one of those ponds?
Well, they'll go in a pond, and it'll get released from a pond. I'm saying, my time of concentration for flood is 10, 12 minutes, where the floodplains is like 40 hours. It's a massive floodplain.
Right, that's, that's what I've seen out there. So, and the water across the road, I mean...
The water from this won't cause a floodplain.
You gotta come back up to me.
You can give that mic, you can pass it to him, sweetie. Keep getting up, and that'll be fine.
I need the exercise. So, the floodplain will attenuate way later than this site will attenuate. Attenuate means that if a storm hits this town, the water runs off of this property long before the water way uphill comes through and makes the big floodplain.
If it runs off the property, where's it going?
It goes into the floodplain that's empty, not the floodplain that's full. It doesn't fill the floodplain. What fills a floodplain is the 15,000 acres upstream that's coming down to it.
Well, the railroad track blocks any...
Right. It does. But it's, I'm just telling you that this, if we said only rain hit this property, you wouldn't see the water going through that property, if it was just this property.
All right, so when you widen the road, there's currently a big ditch, because I think that's what calls what...
Alongside the road.
Right. So how do you widen the road, again, 'cause I'm not an engineer?
You move the ditch over.
So the ditch is going with it, and you're putting pipe in there, or what do you do?
No, it would just be an open swell.
An open swell.
Open swell, but engineered swell that meets VDOT and county standards.
Okay. All right.
And we're gonna do that on our side.
On our side, yeah.
Yeah, I caught that one. All right, then, I'm gonna go back to this, Mr. Martin. My last thing, sorry, sorry. No, I'm not sorry, but... All right, the projected financial profers. All right, can you just talk about, and I'm not gonna go individually, I wanna know, when do those get released? In your mind, in your negotiations?
Sam, did we say site plan? What triggered it? Was it the site plan approval from you guys, correct?
They can, they can vary, John, but it would be, you know, at your discretion of when you wanted to do that. I mean, it could be at the time of submission of site plan, it can be time of approval of site plan, it can be a time of building permit.
What did you, what did we put, I'm sorry, I apologize for not having the application from you. I think we were consistent with all of them, weren't we, what we wanted to do? Can you remember? Sometimes there are site plan approval, and sometimes there are occupancy. I can't remember which, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Which one we said.
Okay, because I just wanted to make sure that everyone that lives there understands that you're, you may be site plan, but you also may be occupancy, which could be two and a half more years of whatever anguish you're gonna have, 'cause you're there.
Right.
So I wanted to make sure you're telling us when you're gonna do it.
And those will be per building, so if we put in a site plan, say for building one, then obviously, I'm putting in a site plan, because I wanna build the building. But I get your point, we build each building at a time, so I think we did site plan approval?
Right now, it's, right now, they're, they're written mostly as upon construction of each building, that's set forth in the reasonable...
Completion or beginning?
So it'd be a building, building permit stage.
A building permit?
It's building permit.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Okay, that's all I have.
That's why I don't like to guess.
Okay, thank you, that's all I have.
Sure, thank you.
I just wanna clear up a couple things. The access to the property, you're saying that's gonna be now off of Brandy Road, not off of Belle Prey at all?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I was gonna finish.
I'm sorry, I missed that.
Yes, I know, I know. For construction of our property, our construction vehicles, we want to cross the rail. When we're finished, and I'm going to work, and if I work here, I'm gonna drive down Belle Prey or, and drive into security gateway.
Construction is off of Brandy.
Right, 'cause once we finish construction, Norfolk's not giving us another easement, that's it.
Okay. And then the other question I had, you talked about the, there's nothing gonna be at the top of the buildings?
Correct. So what we have proffered to is, that our tall, our building would be 60-foot with nothing on top of it. Now, if I build a 10-foot building, could I put something on top of it? Yes, but I'm not gonna build a 10-foot building.
Okay, so where are the air conditioners?
They're inside the gen yards.
They're gonna be with the generators?
Yes, we've changed with, most of the, now, our AI data centers, we've taken them off the roof.
Okay.
'Cause what I talked about earlier, we found the noise, when you have a 60-foot building and you have 15-foot of HVAC up there, that noise can permeate that way, so we've, we've engineered, the other reason we've done it, efficiency of the computers and other things, but, for sound. It's one of the byproducts of that. Yes, sir.
The substations, you've got three substations here?
Yes, sir.
That's if you fully build out nine buildings?
Correct. So one substation, I would look at one substation for three buildings. Those are 300 megawatt substations.
Okay, so you're not gonna start building three substations? You're gonna build buildings and a substation to feed them?
And by the way, those substations, we pay for. Our project pays for the substation.
Okay. And another question on the substations is, does it matter what kind of power lines need to come into the property, whether you have one substation or three?
No, my understanding is with Dominion, we're gonna have, you can correct me, 230? It'll be one set of 230 KB lines that come in, and then they'll split to each of the substations. So you hit the first and work through all of them. It won't be separate lines for each substation.
So the major towers will be, you need that, whether you have one substation or three?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. We talked about the noise. We talked about the, you know, the loudness issue, if you will, 60 dB at the property line and so forth. But, I don't know... line and so forth, but I don't know if you have any experience in building other data centers. We've always heard that that maybe not is the real problem. The real problem is the constant hum, which may be a much lower decibel, but it's there all the time. And I guess my question to you is, how, can you mitigate that, or have you had any experience how to deal with that?
I'm standing here waiting. So, that hum is the HVAC systems that are on the roofs with this scenario, with them going down on the ground in the yards between the buildings? I think that, I'm not a noise expert, but you're taking the noise that can go out off the roof and permeate, and it's between the buildings, where they're going to be down at an elevation of twenty, and the top of the buildings at sixty, and that noise has got to go through a sixty-foot wall to get to outside that, notwithstanding the fact that some of these buildings are over a thousand feet from the road, and then other five hundred feet from a house, so there's a distance.
So, mitigation is to put them down low?
Yeah, when the people talk about the hum, it's, there's a single-family subdivision, the houses that are fifty feet from the data centers, yeah, they're going to hear a hum, but this is quite a distance.
We talked about water, you're not going to use water to cool anything, you're just going to use...
Correct.
Okay, and did I hear somebody say earlier that you looked at that, and you do have sufficient well capacity on your property, without impacting anybody else's well?
Perfect.
My name's Mike Lynn with SES, and we worked with Stan Tech, they did a preliminary hydro study. We actually have two water wells permitted by VDH in areas where we're pretty sure we'll get enough water to serve the, just flushing toilets, I mean, this is not going to be water cooled.
Okay, thank you. In your proposal here, you talked about construction hours. They seem way out of bed with what we typically look at as construction. You're talking about starting construction at seven in the morning and going until nine at night. That seems like an awfully long time. I think most of the stuff that we've looked at says you start at maybe seven or eight, and you finish by six or sunset.
I think we can look at that.
Okay.
Yep.
I think that's something that we really need to take a look at.
Yep.
Subjecting people to construction for that many hours a day is a lot.
I want to build this really, really fast.
Okay.
But I hear your point, and we will definitely consider changing that.
Let's see. I think that's it.
Thank you very much.
Okay, I just wanted to try to understand the range of figures that we could get from the projected financial proffers. So, in your discussion, if I'm right, in one point two, you want to maximize your point two five FAR calculation, so that came out to where you could have a hundred and six acres under the roof, but you said that would be unrealistic, well, you'd never go over four million square feet.
I think we're at four hundred and thirty thousand square feet, times nine, comes to three point eight, give or take, million square feet. That's what we're, that's what we would build.
Okay. Did you use the three point eight million to calculate your cents per square foot to get these numbers on this page?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, obviously, they would be less than half, if you only go with your four-building option.
That's correct.
Okay. At what point in your project, or of the world, would you decide, hey, we're doing good business at four buildings?
Um...
Or is that, that's open-ended?
It's not, we're growing so fast in our industry, we're desperate to grow our footprint worldwide. We're not going to stop building data centers.
Okay. All right, so with ten years out, you could still be getting that ninth building done?
Yes.
And even if you're moving along at speed, you know, you might...
This is not our last data center. We have this complex, and we have something that looks like this in other parts of the world, so we're, there is an incredible appetite for data, especially when it comes to AI and quantum computing, which is coming next.
Okay. Because I just want to make sure the public, even if these numbers look appealing, I want to make sure that, you know, we're all not sad later when those benefits don't come.
I think that's a fair comment. We really like the site, and we wouldn't, you don't know me, so you, I can't say, trust me, because that wouldn't make any sense, but I would just say, as we've spent an enormous amount of time and effort, and we know this is a hurricane of effort with this community, but that's why we're, we really like the site for a lot of reasons, which I've laid out.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
I have two questions, really. One is a smaller man. Is there any points, like, are they going to have the blast to put in any of those?
We do not have a, we had some preliminary geotechnical analysis that we did, where rock was anywhere from eight to twelve feet, but, and very sporadic holes, so we don't have specific holes, because we don't want to drill holes until we know this is going to be there. There's an expense to drill the holes.
No, I just wanted to try to figure out if there's any association with blast, because I know there have been other data centers that are blasting.
Yeah, and I would say that, a couple of things. One, because we're doing a drain field system instead of a gravity sewer system, we're not going to have real deep sewer. So, for utilities, you know, I'm hoping that that's not the case, or shouldn't be the case, because to balance this site, what we're taking down, we're filling as well, so we haven't done that full analysis yet, but we'll make sure we minimize the blasting, but I can't say there's not going to be blasting. This is western part of, you know, this is, this is, the geology's rock here to a degree in this area, you know, so...
Yeah, well, obviously, the ponds are going to be at the lowest end of the property, and we're going to burn them up rather than dig holes, so...
Or make them more shallow and spread them out.
Well, we got plenty of...
And take up more land.
We got plenty of room to spread them out, as you can see.
Yeah, so there's that. The other thing would be, is the, on the substations, they're really close to the railroad. Has there been any discussion with Norfolk Southern at all?
No, but we meet the hundred-foot setback that they would require, you know, they don't have any jurisdiction on the substation within a hundred feet of the railway.
Yeah, I was thinking more about the vibrations associated with the...
I don't know, I have substations within fifty feet of the railway and other projects.
Okay, just a question.
Yeah.
That's all I have, thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. On the new power transmission line that would run to the site, that you're working with the property owner for their permission, what distance would that new line run?
I think it's roughly two miles.
Okay, and if...
I will get back to you with the exact distance.
All right, and if you've got the property owner concurrence, then there's a very high likelihood that Dominion will say, okay, that's the way we'll go?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Mainly because Dominion's engineers dictated, that was one of their runs, and then we took that run and went to the property owners, and one property owner, I think it was Kelso said, I really don't like the way the line goes this way, can you move it over there? And they went back and said yes, and they moved the line. So, yes, yeah.
Thanks.
Anyone else? Yeah, one, you made a comment through, in your presentation, in reference to septic for those in the community. What, refresh my mind on that, exactly where were you headed with that? Because you said something didn't work, and then you say something...
Well, they're not on public sewer, so the folks that live on Stevensburg Road there, that are near the church, which some of those houses sit up against our property up there on the far right there, those houses. So, we looked at those to see, all right, you don't have, you do not have sewage, what would it take to run that? And so, we asked the question with our engineers, is could we tie them into our water and septic? And...
Only a few of the, only a few of the houses were being impacted.
All of those are pump and haul, none of those lots perk. So, the reason why we were creating that fund was to take care of that. And talking to Mike Lynn, there's already a mechanism in place to put that fund into to take care of that. We don't have to create that mechanism, he said there's already one in place.
And we're talking about how many, how many houses impacted by that?
I want, I'm guessing, but I'm thinking sixteen, I think that's what I counted. It's a guess, I'll get back to the exact number and the addresses. I want to say it's sixteen.
So, I've seen this done at the other end of our county, and, and very successful that part, so I was just curious.
We're open, we're open to tying them in, we're open to create a fund where it can be taken care of by a third party. We're very open to how we can solve that problem for them.
Thanks. Any other questions at all?
First, yeah, you can go ahead and have a seat.
Sure.
Thank you very much for the presentation. I have a question for staff.
Sam, could you remind us what the current status is of our county's conservation program?
County's, I'm sorry, the county's...
The county's conservation program.
So, the board recently revised the conservation easement development program, it's an ordinance, it's not currently funded, so we have no acquisition for easements currently under play, but it is, there is an ordinance, and it's ready to be enjoyed if the board wants to move forward with that, so...
Okay. So, if funds appear, then we develop a program?
We would have an ordinance in place to be able to look at purchasing conservation easements on behalf of the county.
Okay.
Thank you.
No other questions? All right. At this time, we're now opening a public hearing. If you'd like to speak to this application, raise your hand, be recognized by the chair. We have two minutes. When you come up, we are timing it so that we can get as many as would like to respond to, respond, okay?
Three minutes or two?
Was it two before? Okay, and we'll give a little bit if, we'll give a little bit if I have.
How you doing?
Good evening, sir.
My name is Wilbur Benfit, and my house is on fifteen to eighty-seven Stevensburg Road, and I've never met Mr. Martin. We've never talked about price or anything, okay? And basically, I'm an expert on Brandy Station, and when I heard about the burns being put in, and floodplains, all of Brandy Station is a floodplain. When it rains, the water sets on top of the ground, it don't soak in. So, whatever water we get goes into Mr. Zach Green's pond, and then into Jonas Run, okay? And as far as, it's not being any rock down there, I had a septic system put in, and I had to get a whole ram at six hundred and sixty-six dollars and a half, okay? That was a lot of money. Now, as far as water pollution, we have plenty of open wells around this area. Any pollution that comes out of those, the data centers and the generators, go into these open wells, and our wells are shallow. A hundred and fifty feet, you have water. If people start taking water out of those wells, the neighbors are going to run dry, and if you pollute those wells, in ten years, we won't have water to drink. And as far as noise go, the other evening, I was sitting outside, and I could hear the train track. I could hear the train traveling on the train track, and this is just, you know, a hum, and I said, just imagine that train noise being twenty-four hours a day. That's what you would have from the data center. And if anybody believed that those generators are not loud, go to a carnival where they're having, they use that generator, the same type generator, it's running, and just imagine that generator running, and you're trying to sleep. So, you know, I'm sitting back there listening, and everything I hear is misleading, and it even sounds too good to be true. And if you know what to say about being too good to be true, if it's not in writing, it's no good.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
What did you say about those generators? You just heard his comment about those generators? I'm going to tackle that, yeah. You heard the comment that was made?
Yeah, I, again, I'd have to be there to hear the hum of the train and the noise of the train. I'm not a noise expert, I'm a civil engineer. I just know from the multiple cases that I'm involved in, and that I've worked on, that when you put those in the yards in between the buildings, they get, it blocks. I understand it if the yards are facing the houses, and the generators aren't, and it's really, it's really, the hum is from the HVAC systems, it's not from the generators. Generators don't hum. So, it's not, that's it. The hum is, and now, these HVAC systems aren't on the roof, so they're not permeating out, they're down on the ground, so I think professionally, the way to do this is to get noise information, so you can understand the noise differences, and you can compare the carnival generator to the generators that we have, because I don't think the carnival generator is the same as one of these generators. These things have been, I mean, these are thirty-two cylinder cats that have been perfected, and they're an enclosure, they're not, they're not an open-air generator, they're in an enclosure. The only thing that sticks out is a stack, and it's off a muffler. I mean, they're an enclosed system, so...
You said, how many thousands, you said a thousand feet away from the, didn't you say something about being a thousand feet away from the closest?
Yeah, the closest house, our closest buildings right now is two seventy-nine to the road, but that house is another five hundred feet away on the other side, that one building, but the buildings that are on the west side of the creek, they're over eleven hundred feet from the road. So, you know, it's a big, it's a big difference.
All right, thanks.
And sound dissipates over time.
Okay, thanks for that clarification. Okay, anyone else? Yeah, the lady in the pink?
I wasn't going to say anything. Teresa Clinton, and I'm in the Stevensburg District. I respect what these gentlemen want to do, but I'm just thinking in my head, these buildings are sixty feet tall, and they want to put a fifteen-foot berm. Let's think about that. We're going to see these buildings, we're going to, we're going to hear them, and my question to these gentlemen, I ask you, would you want this in your front yard? That's just, I can't grab hold of this, this is ridiculous. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, miss. Anyone else?
Yes.
Hello, I'm Seth Heald, I live in the western part of Culpeper County, Rixeville. I don't live near this proposed project, so I'm not here to tell you what it'll do to my backyard, but I do oppose it. I think, and it's particularly ironic that this hearing, it's by coincidence, I suppose, is less than a week after Governor Youngkin was here to dedicate a state park, our newest state park, very nearby, and I think of the effort and the money that went into preserving the battlefield area around Brandy Station, which also helps to preserve the rural character of the county, which both of those things bring our big money makers for the county, and also are why a lot of us live here, and so I think we should stick to the comprehensive plan. This is too big a project, it's in the wrong location, and I urge you to vote against it.
Thank you, sir. We, no applause, please. Yes, sir. Good evening, sir.
My name is Howard Lambert, and I'm here on behalf of the Brandy Station Foundation. As many of you may know, that the Brandy Station Foundation's been around for a while. We operate the graffiti house, this goes back to eighteen seventy-eight, it's a business center and a museum. It is in our backyard, and so we recently had a meeting, I want to share with the board what our official position is. We talked about it to a great extent, and we sent in a letter, so you've probably seen that, but for the official record, I just want you to know, as a member of the community, historical, we want to make sure that our voice be heard as part of this process, so I appreciate you giving me the time, and I'll be very brief. Most of the things you've already heard, in terms of what we discussed at a meeting this week, more specifically about not supported by the Culpeper County's comprehensive plan, we're really concerned about that. They have a plan for a reason, loss of agricultural lands. I grew up in Culpeper, I was agrarian when I was here. It has changed tremendously, especially as a historic district, and we need to think It has changed tremendously, especially as a historic district, and we need to think about preserving that. Infringement on contiguous agriculture and residential properties, the current country roads would be unable to accommodate the additional traffic from construction. I mean, if the entrance is going to be used on Brandy Station Road, I mean, how high the, the railroad is, I'm concerned about that. When I was growing in Culpeper, that was a very dangerous road. Thank goodness we got 29, but if you're going down Brandy Road, I'm concerned about safety there as well. The requirements and cost of additional electrical infrastructure would be borne by consumers, not just the proposed project. The infrastructure would also cause agriculture and residential areas affecting the quality of life of the current landowners. And you think about them as well. Another thing that hasn't been raised, and I'm not an expert on this, but I want to raise it based on my common sense and other things that happen in communities around the United States. And as a possible depletion of water sources and accidental, accidental fuel spills from fuel inventories held for emergency generators would impact underground water aquifers and lead to contamination of the supply. Having to take a look at the aquifer, aquifer and how porous it is and if that's contaminated, you know, what's that going to do to the, to the local landowners in that area? The other thing I want to mention is, I was surprised when I found out about a week ago about the profits and Brandy Station was listed there. I know they've done due diligence and I've talked to other people in the community, but it'd been nice if they contacted us as well. We're members of the community and, and so once again, I'm not criticizing them, but you know, Brandy Station Foundation has been there a long, long time. Shiloh, I know Shiloh very well, I know other people there, but you know, reach out to everybody in the community if you're going to put us in profits and I appreciate that. Thanks for the time, I appreciate it, and just want to share our perspective from the Brandy Station Foundation.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Anyone else?
My name is Joshua Wilks, I'm from the Stevensburg District. I'm opposed to rezoning requests on the subsequent data center complex that will result. It doesn't fit here and we must count the cost. Yes, it directly, it directly and negatively impacts our family farm that feeds 1,000 to 1,500 families a week across the road from this, but what about the cost to the community? For, for the applicant, it's but another project and they've done a good job presenting. It sounds the applicant has done many of these across Virginia. And this one doesn't go through, they'll move on to the next one, but for us, it's a one-time shot. Once it's here, it's here for good and we be, and we get to deal with it for the generations to come. What does Culpeper want to become? Loudoun, Fairfax, Prince William, or stay as Culpeper? I'm very grateful to the planning commission for all the time that they put in during the summer of 2022 with revisions to Culpeper's comprehensive plan. I got to attend some of the meetings as well. And the result was the current comprehensive plan for which I'm a supporter of, I'm also a strong supporter of property rights for landowners. But in order to keep us all in check, we have zoning ordinances and a comp plan to help us make sure we're not only being neighborly, but also to help us all plan where we want to live and operate our business. If it were possible, for example, for a gas station to randomly be built on a neighbor's property just because a neighbor wanted it there, we'd probably think twice about living in such a community. We have a comp plan and zoning ordinances for a reason. The proposal we are reviewing tonight goes against Culpeper's comprehensive plan. This property was, I believe, properly removed from that industrial years ago for reasons so many years ago, for, because Culpeper wanted to maintain this area's rural nature, its ag focus, and its historical significance, being so close it was now a state park. Massive new transmission lines towering 75 to 150 feet plus across Brandy Station would open the door for more spot zoning likely and industrial sprawl across A1 land. There will continue to be good presentations and promises of lots of money, but what does Culpeper want to become and to look like? This is why we have a comp plan. I'm a concerned citizen of Culpeper, I love my county, I moved here from Northern Virginia for a reason. The Maroon, the Maroon data center spot zoning and the approved industrial scale solar applications approved in non-industrial zone land per the comp plan have opened the door for a flood of applications from opportunistic landowners and out of county and even state developers to eye Culpeper's precious agricultural land in hopes of making lots of money at the cost of our farming residential community. So for the sake of the future generations, we need to adopt stricter ordinances that will protect Culpeper by keeping data centers and industrial scale solar in currently industrial zone land, which the comprehensive plan provides. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Josiah Wilks. I live in Brandy Station on a farm right across from where these big data centers could be built. My grandpa bought this land because of the wonderful farming community it is located in. I hope to find this land with my children one day. Please protect Culpeper Farms for future generations by saying no to this big projects. We need more farmers. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Green shirt? The gentleman in the green shirt? Yes. No, um, yeah. Come on, Mr. Green, your shirt's not green, man. Your name is green.
Yeah, good evening, Corey Clinton, Stevensburg District, I live off of Glenella. And I think, I think we're, we're really posed with one major question. And that is, really, we're faced with what is the vision? What is our mission statement outlined in the comprehensive plan? But we're, we're faced with rubber meets the road here. You know, one direction, one, what last week was commissioning of, as mentioned, the Glen, our governor was here, kick off the, the state park. Are we going to go the direction of agro-tourism and promote the, the comprehensive plan that we have before us? Or are we going to divert from that and go the direction of Fairfax, Loudoun, and Prince William County? That's really what's at stake here. This is a massive, massive, three substation, massive, nine building, 3.8 million or 4.6 million, whatever, and a large amount of square footage, data centers. When it comes to noise, yeah, you know, we can use all that engineering degrees and calculations and decibels and all that kind of stuff. But if you go into Prince William County, the dog barks two houses away, do you hear it? I can walk out here in the evening, I can hear a dark, a dog bark a mile away. Both dogs produce the same amount of decibels. So it's really kind of relevant. When you have three, three substations, a vast amount of, of data centers and generators and all that, that ambient noise will penetrate for miles. Yeah, it may be underneath the 60 decibels, but if you plop this into the middle of an agro-cultural, I mean, there's nothing, there's no industry around, right? So as mentioned, the railroad tracks are there, you, we can hear the train for miles. You go into, you know, you go into New York City, do you hear the train? Eh, probably not, because it's filtered out by all the other noise. So I believe the proposal does not fit the overall vision of this area of the county. It falls and fails to comply with the guidelines and objectives outlined in the 2023 comprehensive plan. The other question is, why am I here? What I heard from, 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 from Sam and team is, it doesn't meet the comprehensive plan. It failed to meet some of the application requirements. So why, why haven't we here asking these detailed questions of very technical of the site? We shouldn't even be visiting this. So I encourage you all here and now to vote and deny this and put a stop to it. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Chairman and the members of the committee, I guess I'm the odd duck in a bunch. I've sat back to listen to everybody talk. Larry Green, I apologize. And they have very valid concerns with water, noise, and the floodplain. One gentleman was correct about Brandy Station. We all know, if you've been here very long, blackjack does not like water very well. It seems like the applicant has done a very good job of addressing that. Far as noise, there's no more noise going down that, that railroad track. We've all been hurt. We've got a passenger train goes down that track 80 miles an hour in the morning. What people are not realizing is the alternative. So everybody wants rural Culpeper. Nobody knows rural Culpeper more than you, Sam, me sending a few others of you. That's gone. But the alternative is, if this doesn't go through, you're guaranteed a minimum of 100 homes in there. And what you got to look at is, what's best for Culpeper? 100 homes are going to cost this county thousands of dollars or a man is willing to put $2.5 million into our budget. Plus, I've never seen anybody want to do as much for the fire department, the four Hs, and all these people that this man is willing to do. Y'all have been doing this longer than I have, maybe have. He'd give you a date when he can do it again. I know you're all very smart people and I know you'll do the right thing. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
Thank you for this opportunity. And my name is Mark Wilks from the Stevensburg District. And I'm just a lowly farmer, I can't promise you a million dollars of tax revenue and I don't have the resources to produce elaborate studies or graphs or slides to show you my concerns or how this will negatively affect us. But I can say that probably in 25, 30 years, I could produce maybe another 50, 60 children and we could produce higher tax base for you there, but that's all I can promise. But my wife and I bought our land over here 25 years ago. And we had to wait another 10 years before we could afford to build our house and move our family here. We finally made it. We came out here with our nine children with the intention of farming and teaching our children the value of hard work, integrity, and entrepreneurship. It has worked. Our farm today supports seven families who live in, around the farm and on the farm. Our 22 grandchildren and six married children live all around the farm. And as you've heard, plan to continue living in Culpeper and farming for the generations to come. We want to build houses and lay down deep roots, but we are hesitant right now, trying to figure out what Culpeper is going to do. For me, this is really more about the integrity of Culpeper than it is about this, even this particular project. If I have to continually question what is going to happen next, it creates an insecurity. I sold real estate in Fairfax County for 30-plus years and I can remember the rezoning battles that went on 40-plus years ago. We were told back then by developers and investors that the rezoning being asked for would do what? Keep our taxes low. That was the main benefit that they offered us. Today, Fairfax County with all its rezoning has one of the highest tax rates by percentage of income for all of Virginia. And most of the people that lived there 40 years ago could not afford to stay. Many of us moved out here. And I'll say, I've said this before, all that glitters is not gold. In my opinion, Culpeper has done a great job of managing its resources and keeping taxes low without a lot of rezoning of agricultural land. This is a rural agricultural area that has been successfully farmed for hundreds of years. We knew that when we bought our land. We bought our land across the street from this property to farm it. In fact, we purchased our property at the same time, it's the same type of land as the land that's being considered here for rezoning. And we farmed it. Now today, our land, 300 acres, produces food for 1,500 families on a weekly basis and supports seven families who live in Culpeper. I know many people, young families, who would be willing to take that land across the street and farm it and feed another 1,500 families. And yes, I know by rezoning land, farmers can make more money than they can farming. But there will come a time when we will wish we had farmers on farms that know how to use the land for what it was intended. If someone offered me $10 million for my farm today, I would say no, that's not why we came out here. Now, if this was be approved, then I do not want to live where I do now for many reasons. I oppose this simply because it does not fit with what the county was about when we moved out here and would look forward to seeing this turned down. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
Oh, sorry. I raised my hand. Can I come forward? I just, real quick, my name is Matthew Wilks and I just, I oppose the, this, what the applicant has put forth. As you all handled things last time, when this came forward before, you did a great job. You made the comprehensive plan stronger. I just ask you to continue doing what you've done. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
My name is Derek Waller. I've been here before. It's good to see you all again. I live right off of Belle Prey Road, just not too far up from the proposed site. And I just invested in some land up there off of Stevensburg Road, not too far away from this project where the power lines are projected to go through. I also work on the farm that was talked about across the road from the proposed data center. And I'm opposed to this project going forward, so if you would, especially for the, sticking to what the comprehensive plan shows and for many other reasons, I ask you to oppose this. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Yes.
My name is Claire. I am actually, I get my milk from the Wilks Farm. So it would directly impact me if everything that has been spoken about isn't necessarily true. I don't know what the repercussions are if everything that has been said isn't actually going to happen the way that it's been said. I oppose the data center. And I think you just have to look at like Loudoun County, Fairfax County, Prince William County, the Prince William County Board of Supervisors. Everyone who ran, ran anti-data center for a reason, most recently, because everyone's waking up and realizing they don't want data centers in Virginia. Thank you.
My name is Mark Wilks. I'm located in the Stevensburg District. I have lived in Brandy Station for over half of my life now and I have grown to love this community and lifestyle. I desire to raise my own family in this community so they can experience the blessings I have. This proposed data center application will destroy this quiet little community. I see no reason why this should be allowed to encroach upon the lives of so many residents of Brandy Station. I humbly ask you to deny this application. Thank you.
How's everybody this evening? Good. I live, if you look on the map, the point to the left where the road bends, Belle Prey Road, I live on the farm across the street. When I look out my back door off my deck, I can see Mr. Martin's house. I know when they start their cars, I know when they leave the property. I don't really think a 250-foot berm is going to work because I see right past that point, I can see everything. The other thing about the water on that road, I can walk after a storm, the water's halfway up my calf. It's that bad, it's that deep. I don't think their, their little swales on their side of the road are going to work. All they're going to do is catch the water and it's going to come right back over the road. The part that is across from my property at that point, a Belle Prey Road, it rises up. And so you get a lot of runoff off that property. It sits in a slight swell anyway, it comes right over. I think what would happen is it would speed the water up to flood the road. As far as noise, when you have a generator between two walls, we have one where I work, it's deafening. It is an enclosed generator, like what they're talking about, probably not as big, has a stack on top, it is gas-powered, I'm not sure how theirs are going to be powered, I don't know that you said. Oh, okay, I'm sorry. I'm not sure how theirs are going to be powered, whether it's natural gas or fossil fuel. That thing is deafening when it fires up to go through its maintenance procedures. It's deafening, it smells, it's disgusting, basically. What else? I think that's about it. One other thing, I have family that lives in Loudoun County. They're three miles from a data center. The floor hums in their house from the data center all the time. You can feel it through the floor. 1,500 feet is not going to do it. Thanks.
Hello, I'm Pamela Davis that lives right directly in front of Mr. Green. So the electric wires will come right in front of, through my yard. First of all, that upsets me, but the big thing is the quality of life, what kind of quality of life we want here. And overall, I serve a public job, I am a teacher. I have worked over 30 years. Now it's time, I think, to retire, I hope. And what am I going to come to? This. This. I just feel that the people I work with, which are in Loudoun, I drive daily to, right past Dulles Town Center. I would invite you all to go shopping at the Dulles Town Center. You can't, it's surrounded by these data centers. You need to feel the experience. 60 feet, we can think, what is 60 feet? Until you see it, you will know. And so all I know is it just ruins the quality of life in Culpeper, especially with the history, the African-American history of, for me personally, for Brandy Station. And I looked at the proffers and laughed. Everything's a million dollars now. What is 500,000 going to do? That's all I got to say.
Good evening. My name is Bob Sacks. I'm a resident of Culpeper County. I'd like to address some safety issues that were brought up around the data center that was on Route 3 that I think apply to this project as well. One, Culpeper is lacking in fire protection. I know we have a Brandy Station Fire Department. I know we have the main center downtown. We have one ladder truck. If, you know, God forbid, there were a major fire, we're out of luck. There's no way we can provide adequate fire protection with what we have in the way of resources in Culpeper County, the town of Culpeper. That's the first thing. The second thing, another spoke person brought up was about how are these generators fueled? Is it going to be natural gas? Is it going to be fossil fuel? If it's fossil fuel, where's it going to be stored? How is it going to be stored? How is the potential for leaks going to be mitigated to avoid environmental impact? Big concern. My final point is, I'm trusting my memory here from when the Route 3 data center was approved by this council, is that the planning commission recommended not approving it. And you all overrode it. And again, I think it was a big mistake for there as well as a big mistake for here. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Oh, yes.
Hi, good evening. My name is Jane Burns, Stevensburg District. And thank you, everybody, for being here tonight. I come to the understanding that 3.8 million square feet of data center is approximately the size of 25 Walmarts. I rode down Belle Prey the other day. It's about 2.5 miles from the first, where it begins coming off of, had a Brandy and drove down all the way to approximately where it ended. It was probably about 1.5 miles of road frontage, if not more. And Belle Prey Road is 2.5 miles, just to kind of give a little bit, like, it's basically all of Belle Prey. The issue here is not hiding the, you know, the berms and this and that and hiding the data center. The issue here is this is agricultural land. And yes, I am one of the 1,500 people that are fed by Mr., by Honey Brook Farms, Mr. Wilks Farm. And that's even just putting them out. If, again, somebody said if it's not in writing, it's not going to get done. So the generators with diesel fuel underneath to, you know, blah, 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 blah. Oh, yeah, and a fire, the fire department volunteer. It caused, the profit was 1.2 million. A ladder truck is about 1 million plus. So that's not even, can't even get us a fire, a fire truck. And just, I've never been warned here by anyone in this room. I do not like to be humiliated. I have asked for copies of the slide presentation for us before to no avail. I thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes.
Hello. My name is Hannah Wilks, and I live in the Stevensburg District and love my farm and family lifestyle this rural countryside provides. I ask that you vote to deny this proposed data center project and protect the future of Culpeper's farmland. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes.
All right. Sarah Parmley, representing the Piedmont Environmental Council. It has been nearly two years since the commission last reviewed a data center application on this property. Since then, there have been many changes, including the adoption of the 2023 comprehensive plan, the removal of the Brandy Station Technology Zone, and the arrival of the new Culpeper Battlefield State Park. What has not changed is that a data center does not belong in Brandy Station, a rural agricultural community that lacks the infrastructure needed to support one data center, let alone nine data centers. Approving the Belle Prey Park approves the new transmission line. I am through the middle of Stevensburg, industrializing Culpeper's working farms and forests. Even if the applicant can secure voluntary easements for the right-of-way, there is no guarantee that the state corporation commission will choose that route. Regardless, more transmission lines will bring more industrial development to this otherwise rural area. Like the residents of Brandy Station, this tech park will rely on wells for water. But how much water will they use? How will the county monitor their water usage? And what will happen if there is a drought? Will a data center containing critical information be more important than the families who have lived and farmed in Brandy Station for generations? Data centers do not turn off, but wells can run dry. If the applicant is confident that their water usage will not be an issue, then they should commit to a maximum daily and annual water withdrawal in their proffers. This site was inappropriate for 700,000 square feet of data centers. It is even more inappropriate for 4.6 million square feet of data centers, which is what the .25 FAR comes out to. We respectfully ask that the planning commission follow the guidance of the comprehensive plan, the recommendations of the Culpeper County Planning Staff, and the citizens of Culpeper and Brandy Station, and recommend this rezoning and the three associated substations for denial. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes.
Hello. Chuck Logner with Friends of Culpeper Battlefields and the partner with the brand-new state park, and also representing the American Battlefield Trust. Opposed to this project, a lot of history here, obviously. But when the, when the comp plan started being updated, the current comp plan, the state park was a theory. And then it just, two years ago, signed by the governor. And just on Saturday, the governor came to Fleetwood Hill, which is just off the top-right corner of this map, to cut the ribbon on the new state park. And if you're standing at Fleetwood Hill, which is kind of the crown jewel of the entire Brandy Station battlefield, you absolutely can see those data centers. And you can also see the steeple of churches, and you can see the graffiti house. And you can actually see a historic home that sits on that property, Belle Prey, which I think translates to Beautiful Meadow. But instead of just being opposed to this, which there are many, many reasons, it should be what can we do with this? A new state park, Brandy Station, the town of Brandy Station is now a gateway community. This should be a historic district. And we should be thinking about stopping the train and letting people out right at maybe the graffiti house. And there's just steps away from the new state park. Historic restoration, hotels, things that promote and make the new state park something special. Maybe 75,000 to 200,000 people, according to Virginia Tourism and others, visit annually state parks in the first five years. You get out of it what you put into it. And the American Battlefield Trust and the Brandy Station Foundation, who have donated and will continue to donate property on this core battlefield to grow this state park, encourage the county of Culpeper, to help us make this something special. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay.
My name is Scott Mitchell, Stevensburg District. I'm not a very good public speaker. I was not expecting to speak tonight. I'm fighting a battle of my own on Naws Mill Road, a data center they want to build across the street from me. I'm a member of the Brandy Station Foundation. I used to sit on the board. My cousin, BB Mitchell, if anybody remembers him years ago, thought developments just like this, forming the Brandy Station Foundation. Having worked at the graffiti house, an organization with no money, struggling, the state park thing was a dream come true. That's going to screw all of that up. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Good evening. Don, Stevensburg.
Sounds like you had some background music on your way out.
You know what they say, every hero should have background music.
That's a first that we had.
There's always a first to everything. That's what leaders do. Culpeper, Don Hayton Jr., Stevensburg District, please support local Culpeper farms in the farming community. I wanted to thank, I wanted to take the opportunity to thank staff for making the proper evaluation for this application, which is to deny it. That is the actual logical, because it is the direct conflict of the comprehensive plan. I want to thank you planning commission members in advance to make the same evaluation to deny this application. To approve this spot zone application would render our comprehensive plan worthless and give the residents of Culpeper a vote of non-confidence in our elected officials. We cannot create a set of rules and regulations and bypass them only for certain individuals. The comp plan and the ordinance and other rules are to be followed by each and every person. Regardless of how much money is dangled in front of you, the core values of Culpeper residents cannot be bought and are not for sale. That's what makes Culpeper a wonderful place to raise families. Look in the audience today, see the number of children here in this audience, and this project will affect them for the rest of their lives. To vote tonight is not about data centers. It's about who we are as a community and our love for one another. Tonight, you planning commission members are going to show us how you respect the wishes of Culpeper residents, the residents that helped revise the comp plan in many public engagement meetings. In my heart, I know you planning commission members will do the right thing and send a strong message to these developers that can, that Culpeper cannot be bought by any price. This is a prime example of an application that has no respect for the residents of Culpeper and their wishes for their county. Culpeper documents clearly state the data center should be located on McDevitt Drive and nowhere else, period. Stop accepting applications like this that are in direct violation of our comprehensive plan. Our wishes, I respect you, but please don't be a partner in this destruction of Culpeper County. You owe it to your kids, just like your dad did for you. Help us preserve Culpeper and not to destroy it. There is no more to say, and there are no more questions to ask. Make the motion to deny this application tonight so we can all go home in peace. I love Culpeper, and I'm here to stay, and I respect the speeches today. And I also wish that Culpeper will stay the way, the reason why we are here and the reason why we love Culpeper. Thank you. And I wish everyone a safe trip home and happy Father's Day to all of those fathers. Thank you.
Thank you. Somebody turn that music back on on his way back. Anyone else? Yes.
My name is Pat Somerville, Patricia Somerville, and I am in the, I own property in the Cedar Mountain District. This, we're back again, the same property, the same thing. This is much more massive. This totally changes everything. It should not be approved. It's not in a technology zone. It's not following the comprehensive plan to, the vision for Culpeper to be a rural agricultural tourist, agritourist. And I was shocked, well, amazed. I think it was 2022 that I went on the agritour to other different farms and agribusinesses here in Culpeper. I was amazed at how many businesses there are. And it really brought in a lot of people from around different areas. And I go downtown and see people I know, they're not from Culpeper. They're tourists that come here to downtown to enjoy Culpeper, the county of Culpeper. Don't destroy it, the whole, our lives, our environment, by approving this, because it goes against the comprehensive plan and the desires of the people that live here. Also, if this is approved, this would open the door for a data center to be put down in Cedar Mountain District, which is agricultural area. We have the transmission line, the Remington to Gordonsville line, running right through our farm. We don't want a data center down there. We don't want, another data center is not needed here also in Stevensburg District.
Okay. Thank you very much. Anyone else? Okay. Oh, yes. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Jay Dell, Triplett Phillips, Highlands. I grew up here. This is my hometown. I served in the U.S. Navy. I'm a veteran, like my husband. Been gone for over 40 years, and I come back home, love it. Country, cows, hey, that's the way it was when I left. Loved it. I travel down Belle Prey Road every day. And when it rains, I've driven down that road. It's like a river. And I've been down it, and I think it's cool. It's not good, but it's full of water, and I go right through it. Washes my car because it's full of dirt. But it's a great place to go through, and it's a straight shot to town. I get to Walmart in like five minutes. No problem. Now, I, in the Navy, worked in what you now call a data center. I worked in one. And I can tell you, working alongside people who've worked in a data center longer than I had, they were guys who'd been in the Navy like 20, 15 to 30 years. Okay? Now, straight up, some of them developed what you now call cancer. They didn't call it that then. They developed things in their brain. They'd fall asleep at staff meetings. And before we left, they died. They were dead. I can't tell you where it came from, but I can tell you this. We were surrounded by satellite centers, comm. centers. And I worked in the unit where all, everything was underground, and it took water to cool everything. I wasn't allowed to go in there, but contractors work. Government contractors worked those centers. They went down in the ground. Anything messed up.
Just talk to it.
I'm sorry. Anything that got messed up was addressed to the government contractors. And, yeah, water was involved, electricity was involved, and it was a mess sometimes. I know that money drives the train many times on projects. I understand that. And I think bringing the money to Culpeper in the amount of $167 million is outstanding. I really do. But I think like the people prior to me who've been up here speaking tonight, that Brandy is a country place, it's a farmland kind of place. People have cows, especially my uncle. And Dennis Brown, you drive by, he's got more cows than you got cars in Culpeper. Cows everywhere, farmers everywhere. And it's wonderful, people mowing grass and you don't hear a lot of noise. It's a nice place to sleep at night, not a lot of lights in the skies, dark. I don't have an electronic, uh, what do you call it? I don't have ADT. I do, but I don't, okay? I do, but I don't. And it's like this. I think Brandy Station is a wonderful place. When I went, I've been all over the world. I'm not bragging about it, but I'm, I've been all over the world. And I've been through, well, I've lived through and participated through six wars, okay? And Brandy Station's a great place. I call it home. And my dad said a long time ago, you come back home, but things are going to change. But I think it's going to get better. So I'm not saying that putting in a data center is going to make it worse. And I think money coming into the county would be great because I'm thinking we can sure use it. I just hope with this plan that you have here, that if you're really going to bring this in, I hope it does what it's supposed to do and it doesn't affect the residents of Brandy Station. That's my hope. Thank you.
Ms. Triplett, thank you for your, um, service. Also, six. Anyone else? Okay. We declare the public hearing closed. Commissioners? Any discussion?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I'll, I'll start. I just don't see how giving the comp plan that we've gotten now, the future land use plans, the guidelines that we've got for, um, for data center locations, and the fact that this site is not really compatible with any of that, I don't see how there's anything the applicant can do at this point that would solve those issues. So I don't, I don't see how we get there as a, as a, for me, I can't get there as a guest on this proposal.
Anyone else? Doug? Okay, okay. Go ahead, Mrs. Eagan.
Yeah, I, I agree with Christian Price and, uh, you know, uh, the data center people come to us and they say, we're going to bring a lot of tax revenue. And that, that's all true. Uh, but we've got six data centers approved already. So, um, I guess I'm feeling that, that maybe the county of Culpeper needs the case to look at this and take a look at what budgetary needs are versus what are, you know, what's the budget that we need in the future and where are we going to get it from? And maybe we already have it. Uh, but I think that's something we need to look internally. Like I said, we've already approved six data centers. And there's a lot of money associated with all of those. So I, I agree with, with Mr. Price and that it's just, it's, it's just in the wrong location. Yeah, I think you've done a lot of stuff to try to mitigate a lot of issues that we have brought up in the past. But, uh, I, I just can't see supporting that.
Okay. Yes.
So I tend to agree with my colleagues right now. If you could pick that up and move it into the area where we have, uh, I guess planned, because our future land use plan does not show a data center here. It has been agriculture, you've got a lot of citizen impact. So I cannot support it either. I would like to, you guys seem like, you know, nice, you got the right ideas, et cetera. But it, it's in the wrong place, wrong place. So, um, I will defer back to the last person. Do you have anything to say? Because if not, I'm going to make a motion.
Yeah, I just, I mean, I tend to agree with other planning commissioners. I think, you know, as a planning commissioner, you know, we're looking at making sure things are in conformance with the comp plan. And this property isn't in the technology zone. Uh, it's also not in the future growth area. I, I think there's some additional information that's lacking in the actual submission application. I also think that, you know, from a overall standpoint, you know, we just have to look and decide whether or not, to, to other people's point, you know, where do we want the county to be? And the other thing is, is that if we do it here, we would do it in other locations throughout the county, uh, which would then conflict with our zoning and what we're doing. If anything, you know, in some jurisdictions, you would actually come forth with a, um, a comp plan amendment prior to the rezoning application and things of that nature, if that's what, uh, is what was, uh, what was desired. So I cannot be in favor of it at this time, even though I do appreciate the financial commitment. I think the financial commit would, would help with a lot of infrastructure needs that the city, that county has. And I think, um, that part would be, be great, as others said. Um, but I think we have to rule based on the comp plan, unfortunately. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I was just going to pair it with everyone else's said very well that, um, the financial commitments to the community are significant. I can't, I can't ignore that. But I feel like if we were to support this right now, um, I think, I think one of the citizens virtually said this very well, that it's going to undermine public confidence in the work we've done for the last two or three years, uh, plotting a course for the county with the comp plan. So, uh, I can't support it either. Thank you.
Ms. Price?
Yes, sir, just, just one final comment. Even if you've got 15-foot-high berms and you've got screening and you can't see the buildings, that act alone changes the character of a place. It, it makes it something different. Go down Route 3 and look where they're building the Amazon Data Center. You've got the big berms and all this stuff taking, taking place behind that. It's a different place now. And just, even though you, even if you couldn't see what's going to be there, it would be a different place.
I just want to, um, sum it up too. And, um, and listening, I got to tell you, it's, um, the group that you have and what you all have put together is, is, you know, just to be in this particular location is the only thing. And, um, but you all, um, your presentation is just excellent. And I'll, um, I'll, I'll share that with you. And, um, and I would feel comfortable with you all putting it anywhere, you know, that it would be, um, that we have set aside for those. And, you know, would you say how, you know, the speed that you would like to get it done and all these things? And, um, what you all have tried to do in the neighborhood and tried to get those things. But, um, in this particular situation with the, um, you know, as I listen to the community also, you know, branding, I've been educated more on the history and all that's there that, um, that is very important. But the shallow wells, um, you know, that, that's something that, you know, you wouldn't have control of. Um, and the water that, um, you know, that actually, um, the runoff is something that, and we hear, and I've been down the road too, and it's, you know, you want to turn around and go back. But I think one of them say they like to ride in it, you know, they, they, you know, but she been in the military and all, so. But, you know, I, I just, um, um, as all the comments that have been made, you know, by the commissioners is, is that it was, you know, definitely, um, um, in the wrong place. It's, it's definitely in the wrong place. And these power lines that are going to have to come and, and feed that area. Um, I think in the beginning, I think it was just a few of them that we were talking about. And nine is a, um, a whole nother community. Uh, we have to give it a, um, um, another name, you know, Brandy 2 or something. But, um, but I think that, you know, much has been, um, you all have done a lot of work here and wherever you go to put it and hopefully it still is in, in Culpeper. We have areas where they can be, um, can be put. And we just, um, um, you know, want to share that with you and all of the, um, citizens of, um, of, um, Culpeper and those in, in Brandy who are here. You've done just what this type of, um, um, setting should do. And, and, and that is to give you your voice. And, um, you have spoken, you know, from the young to the old. Um, some of you didn't raise your hands to come up, you so anxious you came anyway. Um, but that is what it's all about. You, you know, to be just as, um, adamant about seeing it done, you know, your way and preserving it as the applicant would like to put it there. And I think you all done a very good job and are to be commended for that. And, um, um, that's what I wanted to, um, share with you is one other thing and I'll, uh, share that at the end. So, um, Ms. O'Heal?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would like to make a motion to, and it has to be two parts, as I understand it, Sam? Right, so the first part, we put it under one umbrella?
You can, uh, we've done it that way in the past.
Okay.
It is, it is good to mention specifically the substantial accord part for the 152232 in regards to the utility. Um, and then, um, that would render a separate decision for the recommendation for the actual zoning application.
All right, let me make it in two then.
Yes.
Okay, so the first, uh, uh, motion that I'd like to make on case Z dash 463 dash 24 dash 1 is to recommend to the supervisors a denial of the rezoning. And it would be because of the reasons that the site is not in a location that, uh, is within the comprehensive plan, the technology zone, urban services boundary. And the proposal will most likely result in the addition of a debt, additional electrical transmissions. It's a negative impact on existing rural residential his, and historic surroundings. So for those reasons, I would, uh, recommend denial.
Okay, there's a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed likewise. We will forward it to the board of supervisors, a recommendation of denial. Okay? And then you got the second one.
Yeah, let me just go ahead. All right, so then the second portion of this has to do with the, um, a finding on the, um, code section of 15.2 dash 22 dash 32, that the recommendation of the planning commission is for denial of the, um, location and character for the substation. It is not in compliance and in, not in substantial conformance with our current comprehensive plan as it relates to this Virginia code. That's it.
Okay. Here, the motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed likewise. We also forward that to, um, motion, um, to our board with the recommendation of denial. Okay?
Thank you.
Okay. All right, Sam, you have anything else?
No, Mr. Chairman, that's all we have tonight. Thank you.
All right. Before we close, I do want to make one comment and that is, um, I think, um, Ms. Jean? I want to, uh, let me see, lady?
Jean Burns?
Ms. Burns? Ms. Burns, I do want to, um, if I in any way disrespected you, I do want to apologize. But my position as the chairman is to make sure that at all times that we keep everything under control. And it sound like things were getting out of control and all I could hear with that. So, um, but if you would like a copy of that presentation, um, just let the staff know and we'd be glad to make you a copy of it. Okay? Thank you very much. Being no other, uh, commissioners, anything else? Being none, the chair entertain a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Okay. Meeting is adjourned.